Proceed. Do I stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at exactly 7:00 PM. We are highly efficient this evening. Okay, first item is item number three, public comments. Is there any public comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Dave Vizzo, One Meadowwoods Road. First, let me say I fully support Seymour traditions. I think it's a great thing that they do. But I'd like the selectmen to reconsider the location or the venue of it. A number of downtown people have made comments to me over the years that it just sort of ties up downtown. It creates a parking castle. No one likes to get shuttled, so they're parking all over the place, sidewalks, taking parking spaces downtown. Parking attendant doesn't work on Saturday, so it's hard to enforce that. We're shutting down roads and bridges. I'd much rather see it moved up to the high school. I know there's alcohol involved, but my feeling is if you can drink on the streets of Seymour for one day, we can make an exception to the high school facility. We've got great parking, plenty of space, plenty of paved parking area where we're not going to ruin the grass. So, I just, I don't know if I'm too late for this year already, but keep it in mind. If it's too late for this year, maybe next year. And I know I've had numerous comments on this. I meant to come down here over the last couple of months and make these comments to this effect. Great program. I just think the venue really should be looked at in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comment? Hearing no public comment, we will move on to item number four, approved minutes from the March 10, 2015 special meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item, item number five, approved minutes from the March 10, 2015 special town meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, number six, first elected report. I'm just going to do a quick abbreviated one. Mary, our new director of community services, started last Wednesday. She has been digging in quite heavily. I believe we will be seeing a report from her within the next three or four weeks. She is going to be recommending several changes right along the lines of what we've been looking for. As we know, she was very much in lock and step with our philosophy, so she will be coming with those recommendations. The budget was presented last Monday by myself. I know some of you were at the town hearing. Tonight, we will be setting the town meeting and also the referendum dates. Board of Finance met last night and approved all the numbers, so we are headed in the right direction. Instead of giving an update on the roads tonight, the next item on the agenda is actually going to be Jim, so he will go through that. And just finally, on the turf, the Board of Education met last night and they've decided that the graduation will not be on the football field. It will remain on campus more than likely. It's going to be on the softball field, so that will allow the turf project to commence soon, sooner rather than later. So that's just a quick little update. I don't want to, as I said, waste too much time on that. So item number seven, discussion with town engineer Jim Gallagher regarding the 2015 road program. Mr. Gallagher.
Good evening. I'm assuming you folks have got the handout?
They should have that, yes.
Package, okay. What we've done to date is we've broken down the work down into five major contracts. There may be a couple of subcontracts associated with the five major contracts, but we've broken it down into a couple of different categories. The first one being that number one, contract number one. That contract number one is going to be what they call heat and place reclaimed. And what that is, is if you visited Patton Avenue when they were reconstructing Patton Avenue, that was a mechanical reconstruction and a mechanical reclaiming. Heat and place reclaiming is a process of a machine that actually heats the existing asphalt, and it heats it up to a temperature where it actually becomes fluid again. Then they mix that material in place, and then they re-roll it in place, and then at a later date, you come back and you put an overlay on top of it. What that does is it allows you to maintain the existing pavement structure, the existing pavement thickness, and reuse that thickness, reuse that material without having to put extra asphalt over it. It's a significant change in cost, a significant reduction in the cost, and so it's going to enable us to do several more roads in the category C, if you remember my category A, B, and C handout. So that's what contract number one is. The order of performing this work is not one through five. Actually, I've started already. I've already advertised for bid. Contract number three, the next contract that will be going out to bid will be contract number two. We've picked the contract order based on some observations of need and of location and of what type of work is actually going to be done. One of the things that we're going to be doing this time around, for lack of a better term, in comparison to what we, to how we performed in Patton Avenue and in that area, we're going to have a point of contact at our office. We're going to have people be able to email to us, the Seymour Construction Road Project. We're going to have an email address for that and have everybody be able to contact us on a daily basis. They just shoot an email to us. Have someone in the office is going to review their emails daily and respond daily if can be or quickly as possible. We're also going to be using the reverse 911 process to identify each of the individual neighborhoods, to let them know when the reclaiming is going to start, when the reclaiming is going to finish, you know, how long it will take to do the curbing and then the mailboxes and that type of thing. There was a lot of confusion on the Patton Avenue project because a lot of people thought, well, they reclaimed and they paved, and that's it, they're done. Well, they weren't done. They had, you know, a different crew come in to do the curbing. And when they were done with the curbing, everybody says, well, my driveway doesn't meet the road anymore because it's a different crew that does the aprons. And so those types of things, we're going to try and eliminate the confusion of, and that way people will be a little bit more informed. Hopefully, it'll make it a lot smoother for them. And a little bit longer term, we are assembling a listing of roads that need to have crack sealing. I think the importance of crack sealing has been overlooked in several of the towns that I'm working in. Crack sealing can extend the life of roads between two and five years easily, and in some cases, depending on the degree of use and the degree of cracking, can extend it even longer than that. So we're going to be putting together a listing for next year for crack sealing. Just as an order of magnitude, just so you can kind of get an idea, Beacon Falls has, puts aside $90,000 a year, a crack sealing in that town, which is a relatively small town compared to Seymour. And so they're doing $90,000 in crack sealing this year, and they're budgeting another $90,000 next year for basically the same reason as with Seymour, as with Oxford, as with Derby. The crack sealing's been neglected over the years, and now it's gotten to a point where the towns have to really catch up. So, you know, I think Seymour's got some money this year for crack sealing. Hopefully, they're putting money aside for next year. It's something that has to continue to be able to reduce the need for this type of a road program. You know, crack sealing is an important part of a long-term maintenance program. You know, these are going to be, these are going to be strong repairs that will be the existing road system, but the crack sealing program is important to keep going. We'll also be providing you with monthly reports as to when jobs are going out to bid. The first contract, contract three is out to bid. We're opening bids on the 20th. We will be able to, I will be able to make a recommendation to you at your next board meeting on the 21st, and I anticipate that the contractor will start early, early, mid-May to start that first contract, and the rest of the contracts will follow right after that. The largest of the contracts is the heat and place reclaiming. That contract is going to, it will take a couple of months to do, to be able to complete that work, and it is a, it is a very, very large machine. It's 100, 120 feet long, three-stage machine. And one of the things about it is it generates a lot of heat, and it's heat and place. When it generates a lot of heat, it also exhausts a lot of heat. There will be places where branches that overhang the road will be stressed by this heat and place process. They will recover within a year. It's just that they will be, they'll be stressed for the year. You'll see, you know, you'll see leaves and stuff like that that are browned instead of green. People say, oh, my God, the tree's going to die. If they don't die, they recover, they come back, and they come back within a year. They come back in the next growing season. So, you know, those types of questions will come up, I'm sure, and we'll have the email address for people to call and say, oh, my gosh, the tree in front of my house is dying because of, you know. It happens, believe me. It happens. And so, you know, we'll be able to, to answer the questions for that. So, I just wanted to kind of give you an update for this. I would guess that within the next three weeks or so, we'll have the next project to go out to bid, which will be the new street area. We selected the new street area because the water company is going to do water main replacements in that area, so we want to get our drainage pipes in so that they can come in and then do their water main replacement, and then we can finally go back in and reclaim and repave those roads.
And just on that, for contract two, as Jim was mentioning, the funds, the water company will be making contributions to the repair of these roads.
Right.
So we'll be able to stretch that money a little bit further than what we had because of their contribution. So, any questions for Jim?
Did skip one thing. In this first contract, we are also including some repairs to Robin Road and Chickadee, Chickadee Lane. Those are roads that did a great job of falling apart this winter, and so we're trying to get those, the most severely damaged areas taken care of right away.
You know, actually, the first code red will be tomorrow night to the folks on Chickadee, Oreo, Whipper Will, and Robin. So we're going to let them know the process. But Rory's in the process now of building these five different code red scenarios, so we'll be able to pick up the phone and make a direct call to these folks so they'll know exactly what's going on. So we'll be constantly providing updates, and as Jim mentioned, he'll have someone from his office handling emails every day. So we're going to try to be very proactive with the communications to avoid any confusion that residents may have. So, just to build off, we have, obviously, we have the 5.6 million to handle these 41 roads that are listed in front of you. We also have 200,000 in the proactive account and 115 in LoSeF. That will pay for a lot of the proactive stuff, as Jim had mentioned, crack sealing, things like that. So we'll be paying for that. Once this process is completed, as you'll notice, this is the 2014 maintenance program for next spring, probably late winter, late 2015, early 2016. Jim will produce another one of these packets for us, so we'll have an idea for next spring where we're going, so we'll have a new category, A, B, and C, and then we'll understand how we're going to address roads going forward so everybody can see that. Okay? Any questions? Everybody feels good? Okay.
I was just wondering, is there any possibility, at the last meeting, I brought up the fact that, and you commented on the fact that some of the roads that we thought were really good in the fall have now become really awful. Is there any possibility of reexamining?
Not, we couldn't do anything with the 5.6 million. If it wasn't listed in this book, as it be or say, nothing we can do with the 5.6 million. It has to be those roads. That 200,000 and 115 that I mentioned, those are the roads that we're going to go after. Now, Robin was not listed in these, but we're going to build off of the contractor being there to do other work to get a cheaper cost to fix those roads, but we're going to pay for that ourselves. It's not going to be part of the road bond.
Okay.
So we will be doing things like that where it makes sense, where we can't.
I would just like to note that there are other roads that need work that were not included in that plan.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And I just don't want us to forget that, because I live on one of them.
Yeah. Yep. I mean, unfortunately, it's been, as Jim mentioned, neglected for so long that
I know.
You know, we're trying to do the best that we can. I think, you know, I think we're making some very good positive first steps, but it's going to be the consistency in staying on top of it. So I'm going to ask Jim every year to reproduce a new report so it becomes commonplace so the selectmen can continue to address that.
Also, let me ask this. Isn't it true that the roads should be oiled?
No, no. Oiling is part of the chip sealing process.
Don't say that part, please.
Yeah.
Taboo.
I'm just being, I'm just answering the question, honestly. No, oiling is, they used to oil a lot of gravel roads, trying to keep the dust down, and I think it's part of the chip sealing process, but there won't be any oiling on any of these road processes.
But that did used to be a very common practice way back when.
No, but it's, but just, just on a separate note, I was trying
We remember it.
Your father told you, right?
That's right. My grandfather told me about it, so I'm not really sure.
Oh, whoa.
On a separate, on a separate note, you were asking about oiling. When these people use this heat and place process, the road gets, you know, they basically melt the asphalt. So, and when they do, a lot of the oil burns off. And one of the processes that they do when they heat it is they reintroduce an oil emulsion back into the asphalt. And another process that they have is kind of a scouring type of process that they use to mix that softened material. One of the benefits of that is that a lot of times, when you're reconstructing roads, the cracks in the pavement go deeper than what the repair is. And with the heat and place process, this oil emulsion will actually work its way into those cracks below the repair process and help reduce, you know, future stress, and helps bind the asphalt up better. So, they do introduce oil at that part, but it's not oil in the roads.
Sometimes old is better.
I don't disagree with that.
Hey, I gotta get me to argue about that.
Okay, any other questions, comments for Rich? Everybody's good? Okay.
Rich, Jim. Thank you, Jim, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I had old on the mind, I looked at you.
Oh, gee. You're just on a roll tonight. Boy, he's spreading it around, isn't he?
Grandpa.
Thank you, thank you all.
Only because we were talking about his grandkids today at lunch, so. Okay, thank you, Jim. Item number eight, action lieu special town meeting regarding settlement agreement and applicable amendments to MSW agreement presented by BRRFOC. So we have, I have a resolution. Whereas Seymour is a participant in a solid waste disposal and resource recovery facility in Bristol, Connecticut operated by Covanta Bristol Incorporated, and whereas the member municipalities in Covanta intend to enter into a first amendment to the municipal solid waste disposal and recycle recycling services agreement, and whereas the first amendment will increase the maximum Bristol Facility Policy Board expense amount from $50,000 to $65,000 plus an adjustment, and whereas Covanta and the various member communities also intend to enter into a certain settlement agreement whereby the member communities put Covanta on notice regarding certain alleged breaches of contract, and whereas Covanta has rendered an invoice for an additional $473,264.55 to the various communities, and whereas Covanta and the various member communities desire to settle this dispute in exchange for a $50,000 credit being applied against the aggregate invoice amount, now therefore be resolved that the town of Seymour is authorized to enter into the first amendment to the municipal solid waste disposal and recycling service agreement, and be it further resolved that the town of Seymour is authorized to enter into that certain settlement agreement, and be it further resolved that W. Kurt Miller as first selectman is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to enter into the first amendment and the settlement agreements. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read? Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Rich, can you summarize that quickly?
Uh...
I just, sorry, but just clarify for everybody.
The resolution actually does a, like I said, is setting out the two specific documents. One, they're increasing the expense amount when there's an annual cost of building adjustment based upon the CPI. As we know, it's almost non-faces right now, so that is not an item. And the second item deals with this, the various member communities put Covanta on notice of alleged breach of contract. Covanta claimed additional $473,000 in income related to various chemical processes that they're using there, and that dispute was resolved by a $50,000 credit being applied to some subsidy of the convention they provided to us. And we are understanding that the other municipalities are members of this particular solid waste disposal and resource recovery facility will be entering into this.
Okay, any additional questions for Rich? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, number nine, discussion, take possible action on Founder's Day request. We have a letter, you should all have in your packets, says, Dear Mr. Miller, Seymour will be experiencing its sixth Founder's Day on June 7, 2015, rain day of June 14, 2015, in celebration of its history and heritage. Event will be held from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM and will encompass the entire downtown area, Main Street from Tressel Tavern to the Strand Theater, including Bank, First Columbus, and part of the Four Streets. They will be closed to vehicles and open to only pedestrian traffic. The street will be filled with vendors, amusements, and other forms of entertainment. We are anticipating the festival will attract not only local residents but many visitors from other areas. Therefore, it is our hope that you will provide use of these parking lots on the above dates, Seymour Community Field, Seymour Community Parking Lot, the Strand Theater, the parking area at 115 and Main Street, known as the Metro North Lot, but owned by the town, the Wakely Street Lot across from Citizens Engine Company, and the Town Hall Lot for handicap parking. If you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me at 203-888, well, that won't be your number. Seymour Founder's Day Association wishes to thank you in advance for the help and support. Please check one of the following boxes, sign and return. Judith Simpson, who is the chair, well, excuse me, no, she's the vice president, excuse me. So this is, we approve this every year. This is allowing the Founder's Day Committee to use our parking lots. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of Seymour's Founder's Day for the parking lots as presented.
So, no.
Motion by Karen, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, item number 10, discussion, take possible action on 2015 National Day of Prayer. Dear Mr. Miller, the National Day of Prayer will be held this year on Thursday, May 7, 2015. This is a national holiday which will be observed across our nation. We would like to observe this day at 12:00 noon at Seymour Town Hall. I'll be inviting churches and pastors in our town to participate. Would it be possible to have this service at the Town Hall as we have had in the past? If so, I would call on you for a brief talk, and would you read a proclamation from the town of Seymour? Pastors will participate in prayers, and a message will be given appropriate for the occasion. We will need chairs, podium, and microphone. If it rains, we would like to use the Norma Drummer Room. Thank you for your cooperation in the past year. Sincerely, Russell La Sue, who is the National Day of Prayer Coordinator for the town of Seymour. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to allow the National Day of Prayer celebration to be held at the Seymour Town Hall at noon on Thursday, May 7, 2015. Motion by Karen, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Where can you prepare a proclamation for that? And we'll take action on our meeting on the 21st on the proclamation to give to them. Okay, obviously, this is everyone's invitation for this as well, so hopefully we'll see you all there, and Karen attends most years, but if any of you are available to come, please feel free to do so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, item number 11, discussion, take possible action on building department fee structure. We have our building official, Mr. Baldwin, here with us. Jim, if you want to come forward and explain your request.
We have the room. Fingers aren't working, yeah. I have a fancy one. Thank you. All you care about is the donuts.
Good evening, I'm Jim Baldwin, the town of Seymour, the building official. And what I just passed out in front of you is just a little brief overlay of what I'm going to go over with you. Most recently, the department has taken on a quite additional workload, and it's in the, basically in a direct result of some of the banking laws that have come in and the real estate laws that have tightened up. So what we find is many, many residents, even our commercial buildings, some of them which we even have in our own town, Industrial Park, find themselves in a very precarious situation where they have open permits, where they've done work on their buildings and they didn't have permits out. Again, residents maybe put a family room in their basement or changed their furnace. So when it comes to whether it's a refinance, whether it's a real estate transaction, what's happening is all our records now are being searched by title companies, researchers, attorneys, and so on. Most real estate attorneys, which I happen to be, had some help with this, who Karen's husband does quite a bit of work, it's causing a lot of problems. They find that the houses can't close, the banks will not provide financing, it's created a real nightmare. So all these people and businesses are looking to the town to remedy. Unfortunately, there is no single remedy, in every case is individual. State statute allows things that are over six years to remain in place, but the attorneys have to actually tell us that that's the statute they're going to use. We acknowledge that through a letter, which I've had help with the county council. Some attorneys like that, some attorneys will not allow that to go further. They like to have complete resolution. So for the town to actually give a resolution, we either have to issue permits and do inspections to safeguard the town from liability. In most cases, this is work in place. We cannot see what's in place. We can't see behind the walls or anything like that, creating a really, a big problem. Another thing that we put in place is basically we will issue the permit, and I can accept professional or engineered certified people to run tests on the system, and I can, I can accept that third-party certification. And then the town, what I also do, and I've had the help of the fire marshals, we go out and the statute has a definitive point in it that if it's in regards to life and safety, that's, we can issue that, and we can make sure there's smoke detectors, we can make sure that there's adequate safety in a building, whether it's commercial or residential. That's another process we're doing. So we're trying to work with individuals. This is taking up a very, very large part of our time. Donna, my administrative assistant, she works on this all the time. We get probably four requests a week. Some people come in crying because their, their closing's been put off, they've been trying to sell their house in this bad economy for three years, they got a deal, and their attorneys are saying, look, we're not closing, we've got this problem, or the banks just want to set, or process it. So I've listed some of the examples here, and you can see that there's quite a bit that can actually follow up this, follow up this procedure here. So in response to that, we decided that, you know, we definitely, our responsibility is to work with these people, help them out the best we can, but there's, we need a fee structure to go along with it, because we are providing services. The town is definitely outlaying time and expects to do this, and it's probably taken on probably a good 40% of our work to do now, added to it. So we proposed, and again, I've discussed this with the Board of Finance and with Mr. Swatey at a Board of Finance meeting, and originally, we talked about things and how we could help our budget and basically cover our costs, and we looked at proposing a $100 fee for basically what would be called an open permit. And that would be basically our administrative costs and our assistance to go out. In the case of where someone would come in and say, look, I'm just going to take out the application, you know, go out and get a full building permit, some of these buildings, that's could be anywhere from 100, 200, to $3,000, depending on what they're, what they're trying to resolve. And then we proposed a $150 per open permit on any commercial property. We had one of the owners of a building in Silver Mine Industrial Park that was built, I believe, in 1980, never had a CL on the building. So that was a very large transaction. They wanted a new business to move into Seymour, which obviously we all would like to encourage and everything else. They couldn't go anywhere until we resolved this, so they could not close that new business, could not start up in Seymour. So with the help of fire marshals, again, we spent ample amount of time getting that resolved. So we don't think the fee is out of line, but this is, this is where we fell on this issue and how we established this. So we'd ask your approval for this, and then if that's the case, then we will administer this fee. And then, uh... this fee.
Okay. Any questions for Jim, and then Rich will ask you to weigh in?
Jim, just a quick question. How did you arrive at the fees? And I don't need the super descriptive details, I just need to know what committee looked at it, or was it a handful of people? Can you just give us a little info?
Yeah, it's basically, basically what we did is, we just, we took the average of what we're outlaying, and the average usually involves at least two hours of time at the minimum. And the other thing, that would be like, you know, maybe an inspection, you know, a field inspection, maybe reviewing documents that were submitted by this person, like I said, the third party, and then the town issuing the letter, and in some cases, on these, we've had to send them to town council to get his opinion and weigh in and make sure that we're doing this right. So, we basically said, you know, a couple hours, $50 an hour, we thought, you know, it wasn't really, you know, stepping on anyone. And I might add, we put down per open permit, many houses, sorry to report this, can have up to, the largest we've seen was nine open permits. That means they put in their family room, they put in a pool, put in a deck, they never bothered, never asked for the town. And the other thing, too, is we have to administer this through zoning and find out, because they ask us to certify that there is no violations current existing on that property. Takes a lot of work to do that, a lot of fact research, too. They don't seem to care about timeframe. So, that's how we arrived at it. And the commercial is much more, I think the commercial takes a lot more, the fire marshals, the fire marshals.
One of the things that we've done, too, to help with this process is Donna Cozy used to be split between the assessor's office and the building officials' office, she's now been moved full-time down to the building officials' office. So, we're trying to take this on seriously. In conversation with the Board of Finance, they've allowed us to move some money around essentially, we brought a temp in to help in the assessor's office so we can focus, get caught up on all this stuff, and run the building department the way that it should be run, a little bit more proactive. If you haven't had a chance to take a walk down, you'll notice that there's now a window. The Jim has done a great job in completely redoing the process. We're in the process as well of bringing all of our enforcement officials into one.
Cut a window for the room?
Yeah.
Did you get a permit for that?
Yep.
And is it closed?
Yes, it's just a little safer for Donna. You gotta go that side. But bringing all of our enforcement officials together into one department so they work a little bit better, more collaborative.
And then, I'd ask, I mean, Mr. Swatey's here, so, I mean, I've had conversations with him, too, and I was seeking his counsel and the board, too. Actually, they encouraged me actually to this fee structure, so.
Well, this is just his recommendation. We can, now, Rich, as a board, our action is to accept this and then to set this fee structure as of a certain date? Or how do we do that? And we can pick the fee, we can pick the amount and the date, correct? So, let's, I assume we want to, as a board, start this immediately? And is there any issue with the amount, notwithstanding Chairman Swatey's comments, but are we comfortable with the recommendation of the building official?
I think the only question I would have is, do other communities do this, and what do they get?
This is so brand new. I've been in this job just a little under two years. This really came about, you know, in the last year. I called the state building department and state building inspector's office, and basically got an answer, yeah, this is a real problem, isn't it? Every community's doing, you know, doing what they can. I spoke to several other inspectors in other towns, we're all trying to pick our way through it, we're all asking for help, we're getting overwhelmed with it. So, to answer your question, I really don't know. I think, you know, someone, if Seymour acts this, and acts this, maybe someone will look to Seymour and say, Seymour is charging this, we should do that? I don't think there's any protocol. I don't know, you deal with other towns, and it can help.
I haven't seen any of the towns that we're dealing with set up a fee structure, but I certainly understand, I'll secondly, this is a recent phenomenon, this wasn't happening five years ago.
I mean, I'm not against it, I just want to know, maybe we're not charging enough.
It might be the instance, I really don't.
Other towns aren't charging anything.
Bill, have you heard of my ear, more money?
Another town, now, I can reach out through our firms, through a variety of communities, and see if there's a, if any, and I'd be happy to do that. I think those are pretty reasonable numbers. Jim and I spent a lot of time on a couple things, but one, we do have a letter that the state statute and some attorneys, including Brett, have been very accepting of, and it has allowed residential transactions to proceed. A big problem is, for example, where, you know, we came across a good-sized commercial building that didn't have a C on it, and had open permits, you know, which they realized years and years, and that kind of thing, they have. So, I don't know how many more than half a town, but this is a recent phenomenon, I don't recall coming across this issue until within the last year.
Of course, and it's not going, it's not, it's actually good, it's not going.
How many of these would you say have to, or require town council's contribution to rectify?
Well, through what town council's helped with, and made mention through the letters, a lot of attorneys are kind of like, I mean, this is really an abatement process. It starts off with, everybody wants to get the file right, and that's what we call it, got every file right. Everybody wants to make everything happen, the banks happy, the real estate attorneys happy, the buyers themselves. Now, that's really hard, that's really hard to do, make everybody happy. The letter of the state statute, a lot of attorneys will say, look, that's good. That basically says, I can enter the premise, I can go on property, you know, with consent, and I'm only looking for life sake at that point, I'm looking for smoke detectors, I'm looking for heat vests, I'm looking for things that actually could cause harm in fire or incense. I have no authority, according to that statute, to say, remove this road. If it's under six years, the state building office basically said, I could repress areas in She-Rock, I could basically, you know, visit, see it. Now, no one's going to love that, and certainly wouldn't. So, that leads us to the other options we're using, where we can see it's time, we're expending, we're expending that there's my direct violency. Most people are just bankrolling, they're just, as I said, it's tough, I've had several women actually try. I feel bad, what am I going to do?
I mean, do we want to start it at the 100 and 150, and then analyze it and see if it can go up, or do you want to go up a little higher, or?
That's my feeling, is that it's a nice introductory rate. I just paid it, because we just got a new furnace, so we just paid it. I think it's a nice introductory rate, you can always raise it.
But you had a permit, you did it right.
Well, we did it right.
Yeah, you did it right.
I'm married to a lawyer.
Yeah, you did have to do that.
So, I mean, is everybody comfortable with the 100? Paul, you?
Yeah, I am, but I would like to review it, you know, maybe six months or so, and see what, and then, Rich can get us a little data on maybe what other communities are doing.
Okay. So, can, so, assuming they will approve this tonight, but if you can't keep track over the next six months, and then maybe some point in the fall, September, October, come back to us? And try to keep a little log of particularly how much town council is involved? Because obviously, it's, you know, $150 an hour for town council, a half hour of Rich's time to do a letter is going to eat up the vast majority of this fee, so.
I don't expect to be involved too often, if you issue this, or after we craft it the letter.
Okay, so now, it's pretty standard.
He has the template.
He has the template, he's with us. It must become a question of this.
I guess it would turn into, if attorney, which I was advised, you know, the action's really on the, how they want to solve the problem, we're there to help and assist us on the problem. When they use that statute, they're telling us that they're using the statute, we're not telling them any one thing to do, we don't tell people, there's many ways you can do it, it's work.
Okay. I suppose everybody's good? Okay, so then, I'll entertain a motion to accept Seymour Building Official Jim Baldwin's recommendation of a proposed fee structure of $100 per open permit on residential properties and $150 per open permit on commercial properties to go into effect on Wednesday, April 8, 2015, at 8:00 a.m. Is that okay, Rich? Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair will tie motion passes four zero, and just note that Selectmen Bruno walked out at 7:40.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Item number 12, discussion, take possible action on acceptance of the Paul Pollock Senior Bypass Channel in Park. This is just more of an update at this point. You should have in your packets, I believe, a letter to myself from William Hyatt, who is the chief of the Bureau of Natural Resources for DEEP, essentially talking about the transition of Pollock Park over to the town of Seymour, and how that's going to work. I'm in the process of reviewing this with town council Stanek. At this point, town council Stanek's recommendation is not to accept the park. We're going to have a walkthrough on Friday at 2:30, which will be attended by myself, several members of staff, and Attorney Stanek. At that point, we will go over all the finer points. Our expectation is that we will have something for this board to approve at our April 21st meeting, but I do not feel comfortable presenting anything to you folks yet until Attorney Stanek is comfortable and has signed off on it, which he is not there as of yet. So, there's been some back and forth, in a very good way, I'm not saying in a bad way, between Attorney Stanek and Chuck Lee, everybody, we're all familiar with Chuck. State is working very hard to bring this project to substantial completion. My expectation is by April 22nd or 23rd, the fence should come down and the park should be open for the public, but I'll have further updates as we get closer to the 21st. So, are there any questions or comments?
I just want to say, Fred's looking for a punch.
Yes, we have, and I have attached, which I got from, I'll show you folks.
I haven't seen it.
It's a summary of some of the work that's left, we just got this today. This is what we're going to review on Friday, so we will go through, Fred, Attorney Stanek, excuse me, got this late this afternoon. So, you know, he's going to have an opportunity to review it.
I can see that.
Yeah. And he's been back and forth with Chuck Lee today several times, so. This all should be wrapped up. I don't expect that there are any issues, there's nothing of any concern, it's just a matter of a few things need to be finished by the contractor, and since we'll be taking on the responsibility of the park, Attorney Stanek doesn't feel comfortable with us taking that responsibility until everything is done and.
I know there was a problem with the lights.
There were some issues with the lights, they've been working on those, we weren't sure how much of it was caused by the snow, because some of them are on sensors, sensors were buried in the snow, it kept the lights on all the time. Bill Jarvis has been over there a few times, working on things, but we think we have everything in order now. But again, that's something that will be addressed at that final walkthrough, to make sure there's no issues.
Because people have been asking when they're going to be allowed to go into the park.
Actually, a gentleman stopped me today in the police department as I was walking out, he was walking in, he asked me that specific question. So, like I said, I would expect the 22nd or 23rd, somewhere in that ballpark. By agreement, we will be closing the park from December 1st to March 1st, we'll be putting chains across, or fencing the block, the stairs, and the block, the handicap ramp, so that we don't have to maintain it with the snow and the ice, just for safety precautions, so. Master Batista, who's been very good for this project, they've done a great job, they've kept the fence up intentionally for the town as well, at no cost to the town, to help with that process as well. But they're ready to have substantial completion and get paid, so they'd like to move this process along, so.
And you're doing this on Friday?
Friday at 2:30, yeah.
Friday?
On Friday, yes. Yes, I will be working on it Friday, Paul, thank you for pointing that out, perhaps you could mention that to Mrs. Stanek at the end.
I just wrote it down.
So, because we work on Fridays.
I'll be here.
So, okay. Item number 13, discussion, take possible action on policy for email archiving. Nothing other than just a quick discussion from town council. We put in some new pieces of software, one, we've done some things to back up our servers, we've made some changes to that, we've put on a spam filter, and the other thing is an email archiver, which will collect and store emails. With that, we need to have some type of policy, which I've asked town council to put in, so I'll turn it over to Rich.
If I may, this is an issue that really has been, I'd say, in approximately 2008 or so to the present, is an issue that has come to the forefront of many municipalities. I'm going to pass out a memo from the Public Records Administrator from the state of Connecticut, as well as municipal records retention schedule, I'm going to put together by the public records administrators, and Paul Miller, and the state library, and pass this out to everyone. We're going to try to put together a policy that takes this into account, and also look at some FOI decisions that are dealt with email. Emails are interesting things, some have to be retained, some don't have to be retained. So, we're going to try to put together a policy, and we're looking at some of the other communities that we're familiar with, states have a policy, so that the state, the town so far, we haven't been successful in finding a model policy, even though the state has low information, they haven't probably gave a model policy to the town.
And the hardware's been in place now for, what, right, about two weeks, three weeks? Some of that ballpark. So, essentially, what we'll do is, we will set a date, and say, as of this date, all emails will be archived per our policy. Anything prior to that, there's no guarantees.
I have been told the state itself is ready to kind of develop a policy.
So is Hillary Clinton.
Wow. So is Hillary Clinton. That's right, it's your people, Rich, it's your people.
We will report back when we can.
Thank you very much. But again, our goal is to obviously comply with FOI, and to be as open and forthcoming as we possibly can with information available to the residents, because we like to comply with information requests, particularly the Valley Independent. So, tell Eugene I said hello. It's okay. So, that is item number 13. Item number 14, discussion, take possible action on fire truck lease purchase. There's actually no action, no need for action to be taken by the Board of Selectmen at this point. This is how we're going to pay for the new fire truck that's been discussed for the Fire Department. I'm working on that with Chairman Swatey and Doug Gillette, who is our bond counsel, so we'll have something, a better update on the 21st for that. Item number 15, discussion, take possible action on financial advisor proposal. So, at this point, I will read a motion. Says, whereas the town of Seymour has requested that William Blair and Company LLC provide financial advisory services to the town for financing and bond offerings, and whereas Blair desires to provide such financial advisory services to the town, now therefore be it resolved that the town is authorized to enter into that certain agreement with Blair, excuse me, pursuant, to which Blair will provide the town financial advisory services in connection with financing and bond offers, and be it further resolved that First Selectman W. Kurt Miller is authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the town with Blair. May I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented? Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? And just under discussion, Seymour has had a very longstanding relationship with William Blair and Company, particularly Dick Thiebridge. He's guided us on multiple bond issues going back probably 30-plus years, I mean, Paul worked with him as well. He's very knowledgeable, very, very good advisor. This will be specifically going forward, he will take over these services for the town, particularly with our bond issue coming up, as well as some other refinancing we'll be doing. So, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resolution as presented. Oh, we already did that, I'm sorry. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair will tie motion passes five zero. I apologize for that. Item number 16, set annual town meeting and budget referendum dates. If I have a resolution, then I'll read. Whereas the town of Seymour is required by the town charter to hold an annual meeting, and whereas pursuant to the town charter, a referendum known as an adjourned town meeting is typically held, now therefore be it resolved, the annual town meeting in accordance with the attached notice of annual town meeting will be conducted in accordance with the town charter on Thursday, April 8, 2015. town charter on Thursday, April 23, 2015, at the Seymour High School at 7:00 p.m., and be it further resolved, in accordance with the town charter, the referendum as the budget known as the adjourned town meeting will be tentatively scheduled to be held on Thursday, April 30, 2015, at the Community Center, 20 Pine Street, Seymour, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and be it further resolved, if additional referendums known as the adjourned town meetings will have to be held, the tentative dates will be as follows: Thursday, May 14, 2015, Thursday, May 28, 2015, Thursday, June 11, 2015, and Thursday, June 25, 2015. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Some.
Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Just under discussion, we need to have the town meeting this year at the high school, as opposed to the middle school, because there is an activity already planned for the middle school that day, and then, as we've done in the past, we're gonna schedule additional referendums, so that way we don't have to worry about coming back to set those. Hopefully, we will only need one, but just in case, we will have that set. So, any questions or comments?
Just to be sure about changing that location, make sure people know, maybe signs even at the middle school that day, so that people know, because.
We will.
People may be confused.
We'll do a code red, we'll do whatever you need to do, and make sure, yeah. Again, the, I shouldn't say that the town meeting is not important, because it is very important, but the referendum is the actual vote itself, so. Yeah, we'll put both, we'll do code reds, we'll do notices and things. Rich, anything you want to add, or you're good?
No, I'm comfortable.
Mr. Zawicki, you're comfortable with that? Okay. There's nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item, number 17, discussion, take possible action regarding engineering contract for Seymour High School Athletic Complex Project. You have the document, standard form of agreement between owner and architect, and this is for the project up at the high school, for the turf field. This has been reviewed by Rich and Brian Leclerc, and conversations have been had with Jim Galligan, who is the contracted engineer, or Nafis and Young, I should say, excuse me. This has also been reviewed by the turf committee. All involved seem to be comfortable with the contract as it stands, so it needs to come to us for approval. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the contract between the town of Seymour and Nafis and Young engineers for engineering and architectural services for the turf project at Seymour High School. So, move. Motion by Paul, second by Nicole. Any discussion or questions? Rich, anything you wanna?
No, I think it's a relatively simple contract, the document, the, the town has a good working relationship with Nafis and Young, and the scope of service, which is pretty good by them, I think they're all embracing, and you should have good product.
Questions, comments, anyone comfortable? Okay, hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda, item number 18, discussion, take possible action on resolution appropriating $2 million for design and construct of an artificial turf athletic field and grant stand at Seymour High School, AKA Project CSAP 2015-17, and related improvements and amenities to be funded in part by an estimated $1,895,000 in grants from the state of Connecticut, DEEP, and the remainder from unencumbered general fund balances. I will read the set resolution. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town of Seymour appropriate $2 million for cost with respect to design and construct of an artificial turf athletic field and grant stand at Seymour High School, also known as Project CSAP 2015-07, and improvements and amenities related thereto, to be funded in part by an estimated $1,895,000 in grants from the state of Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection, and the remainder from unencumbered general fund balance. Further resolved that a resolution with respect to the said recommendations be submitted to a special town meeting to be held on the 21st day of April 2015 at 6:45 p.m. in the Norma Drummer Room at Seymour Town Hall, and that the town clerk is hereby directed to post and publish notice of said town meeting as required by law. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented? Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Just under discussion, the only reason we, the number is 2 million, is if we go one penny above $1,895,000, we need to come back and do the whole process over again. So we built a cushion in there. The turf committee has been strongly advised that they are not to go over the $1,895,000. As soon as though we have two members on this board as part of that committee, I'm sure that won't be an issue. But if we can get some extra work done within the amount of the grant, and it's an extra $5,000, obviously the town would take that work on, but, so. And again, this is procedural, this is recommended by Bond Counsel that we have these resolutions in place. The Board of Finances already taken action on this, so we will be taking this, and then town meeting on the 21st. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If my information is correct, and graduation is being moved to another field, what I was told was that to rent the bleachers for the audience and the graduates is gonna be $8,000, is that coming out of this amount?
We will look into see if that's something that can be done. If not, then we will go to other sources for the money. I don't believe it'll be that much, though.
Okay, I'm just wondering where.
I mean, it'll maybe be like 5,000.
Generally, I'm wondering where the money's coming from to move the graduation from the football field to the softball field.
We don't, I don't think we have a set spot, we have a few places left that we can still go for money, whether it be contingency, fund balance, things like that.
Okay.
So, but just, I think the financial savings of moving graduation outweighs that cost of the bleachers, because with, if graduation were to stay where it was, we could pay substantially more for contractors, short in time periods, and things like that, so.
I understand that, but my question is, where is that money, whether it's 8,000 or 5,000, or where is it coming from?
Well, I know we're gonna look to this bucket first, if not, we would probably go to contingency, see if it's there.
Okay.
So. Any other questions? Or maybe the Board of Ed will pay for it.
Right.
If there's no other questions, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Item 19, we don't need to take any action, because we just did that in the resolution, which was setting the special town meeting. Is that correct, Rich? Because we did that as part of the resolution?
Well.
In the second half of the resolution, it said.
Did it say that?
Yeah, yeah.
In the resolution?
Yep. Okay. Okay. Item number 20 is discussion on request of Board of Finance to review First Selectmen's In your packets, you should have an email that was sent to me on March 10, 2015, from the chairman of the Board of Finance, with a copy to all of its members, and I wanted to bring that in front of this board. So at this point, I'm gonna actually turn the meeting over to Nicole, and I will just sit quietly to the side, because this has a bad, um.
Would you like to come up and?
Sure.
Give our board your recommendations?
Bill Zawicki, Chairman of the Board of Finance. Our group talked about it, and with all the initiatives that are going on in town, you've got a 10-year, you've got capital plans, you've got a 10-year strategic, you've got all of these things starting to move on. Our thought process was, probably most of all, anybody on this board, our board, and whomever, 15, 20 years down the road, doubtful if we're all gonna be here. I mean, Lord willing, we will be, but we don't know if we're gonna be sitting at these chairs. Quite honestly, it's the universal opinion of our board, and myself included, that to run a $50 million corporation and expect to get paid $72,500, it's absolutely ridiculous. You would not be able, at the present level, to attract any type of, say, professional manager, quite honestly, to come in here and give them the reins of the whole town, have them do this, manage whatever needs to be managed. It's just not enough money to attract anybody. What you would end up getting is probably somebody who just needs a job, who for whatever purposes was put up by one or both parties, and I'm apolitical on this, I don't care if it's Republican, Democrat, Independent, that's not my concern. But if you're looking down the road to attract candidates and qualified people to do this, gotta go up on the salary. And my understanding is the salary was raised to this level about 10 years ago or so, and prior to that, it had been at $60,000. Wow. Not from what I see in the real world, quite honestly. Our thought was to set a compensation level to take effect at some election, whether it be the one this year, whoever wins, the one in two years, or however it goes, with possibly increments of whatever, you know, you would decide, 2,500, 4,000, 5,000, whatever, on each successive reelection. And if somebody brand-new comes in, they start at a, at the low level, obviously. But we just thought it was important to open a dialogue, because this is not a sleepy little town, it is not 1975, and if this town's gonna be expected to continue on some sort of, I guess, professional pace, if that's a good wording, something's gotta be done. My other comment in that email that I sent is, if the town considers town manager versus First Selectmen, then obviously the First Selectmen's salary probably, in my mind, gets cut by 40 to 50 percent, maybe more, but the downside is, if you're gonna bring in a professional town manager to run the place with a contract and all, you're probably talking, from what I've seen, anywhere from $140,000 to $170,000, plus benefits. So, whichever way you go, and I would, obviously, I guess the town manager scenario requires charter change and all of that type of stuff, whichever way you go, it's, Seymour's gotta start to look forward. I mean, we're taking these initiatives, we're doing a lot of good things, the turf and policies and procedures, we've got an HR person in place, all of that. This town's not gonna get any smaller, the regulations and responsibilities are not gonna get any less, and if you want somebody to come in and do what they're supposed to do, and serve the taxpayers, and make sure this town rolls along successfully, it comes with a price. So that was the intent, to possibly get some kind of dialogue opened up, so it doesn't, you know, just sit with the expectation that, you know, well, 72.5 will go on infinitum, it's not gonna work, folks. It just won't happen.
And have you had any questions, Rick?
Bill, do you have any data from any other communities, or can that be brought to us before we?
Oh, that's, yeah, I mean, the data's all public information, the finance director can go online and.
You know, in order to, you know, to make a decision, or anybody, you know, get that data.
That's fine, I would think you could direct your finance director just to go on and Google the town sites, because they all have the salaries, it's.
CCM could provide.
Yeah, and CCM can do it, too.
Okay, we can.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
We can get some.
Yeah, I mean, I think whatever information you need is out there, it's all public information. And I think if you look, you know, sizes and benefits, and size of towns and things, there is a number out there that, you know, you can be, you can garner, whether it's an average, or.
A little range.
Yeah, however you wanna do it, and.
I really feel this is something, this is the direction we need to go in. I mean, it's been too long.
Thank you.
I wholeheartedly agree with you, I think this position is underpaid, and getting the quality that we need to continue our town.
Yeah.
We need to increase it. Another, I also feel that insurance for the First Selectmen should be.
When you, when you've, to get the candidate that's gonna sit in that chair, let's say, it's, I don't wanna be remiss and just say, yeah, it's only dollars for a salary, you know, he gets paid every other week. You're talking a benefit package of whatever. I know some years ago, we talked about how many weeks vacation and hours, vacation hours, and if you use it. You don't use it, you might lose it, whatever that resulted in. But you're talking a benefit package, I don't know if it involves a car, I don't know if it involves some extra health insurance, a life insurance policy for the, I don't know. But I think the issue of, the issue of compensation, let's call it, is more than just salary, but salary is the big driver.
Are you talking about a total compensation?
Sure, you have to.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, the town is not the days when you can walk across the bridge and do some stuff on lunch hour, and, you know, come back at night and do some more stuff, or you can come out of the factory and, you know, that, it's over.
Okay. Rich, question?
If I may, I just wanna add, Bill, kind of, just to be a little bit back on the law and things, because there is a lot of law that's very specific in this area, things you should keep in mind as you go through this process. One is actually Connecticut's, the Love Amendment, it's in Connecticut Constitution, Section 2, that basically provides it can affect the compensation for the current office holder during the course of that term. So this is actually the perfect time, and a lot of municipalities have ordinances or other things, charter provisions, or just a process, where they start it now, and they set it for the next term, or, you know, effective thereafter. So, one, you're not affecting this, two, Connecticut General Statute 79460, basically, states that it has to go to the Board of Selectmen for approval, and then to the, to the budget, which in this case is the Board of Finance, or funding. So, both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance have to work in a collaborative way to affect this, and make this happen. And there's a significant, and it's been court case scale, there's not an easy one, it's 40, which shows what happens when you don't follow that process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, that's all I wanna say, so this is a good time to start the discussion, and figure out how you wanna go, and what man, if you can vote for, and set it to the next, or the next.
Yeah, I mean, our board is perfectly willing to work with the Board of Selectmen on affecting whatever you think you wanna affect. Thanks.
Here, we are currently on the low side.
Yes.
I'm like cheering, I guess I'm a rock speaker.
Yeah, it's still.
We are at the low side, and through our towns, I do have the incentive program in place, and I, I'm sure I can take a look at that.
Great.
I think they're just ready to do this.
Yes.
It's basically, encourage, you know, encourage reelection, or, or, a lot of it's been.
The other side that I didn't mention, and I think I'll read it, was the fact that the parties use all the processes to do it, and, 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 I would like to think that something like this is also due by both parties.
Yes.
As, you just don't wanna put somebody's brother, who knows, lead or she, and get hard votes for us, and not be the right person for his job. A lot of work involved, and there's a lot of thought process, it's not, it's probably much, it's probably more than just, who votes, can so and so gather, is it, you know, is that person the right person?
Right.
Yeah, it's a CEO position.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
How it should be here.
$50 million, $50 million company.
Yep.
Don't get your money, you think people that run us, $50 million company, they can.
Exactly. Rich, is there anything else that we should do now?
I don't think it's good now, and I know there's only four of you, so probably it's different, maybe to the next, to, to, as the board decides to leave, or, or, and then, also take it up with this board, and what kind of numbers it's, so.
And then we'll meet.
You guys can work it out.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody? Karen?
I was just gonna say, it doesn't have to work on Friday.
That's a big selling point, trust me. Okay, thank you, thank you, Bill, thank you. I'll close, item number 20, and I will turn the meeting over, stack over to Kirk.
Okay. Okay, item number 21, executive session, we have no executive session. Item number 22 is appointments, so we have a few appointments this evening, we'll go through those rather quickly. Linda Bella Vance, Culture and Arts, it's a reappointment, it's a three-year term, expiration date of 4/11/2018. So, move. Motion by Karen, second by Paul, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Zawicki. Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Wendy Rossi, MSOC, it's a reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires April 13, 2017. Motion by Nicole.
Second.
Second by Paul, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Robert Willis, Inland Wetlands Commission, it's a new appointment, it's a four-year term, expires. Commission, it's a new appointment. It's a four-year term, expires April 7, 2019.
Some
Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Mark Massey, Recreation Commission, it's a new appointment. It's a two-year term. It expires April 7, 2017.
Some
Motion by Nicole, second by, is that you, Paul?
Yep.
Second by Paul. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is number 23, tax refunds and abatements. We have two. Nicole?
Office of the Tax Collector, March 12, 2015. The following overpayments of tax payments in total of $70.69 need to be approved for refund in accordance with provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Dated the 12th day of March 2015, Dana Flock, Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. If everyone can just review, and I'll have a motion to accept the Tax Collector's report from March 12, 2015. Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Nicole?
April 1, 2013, Office of the Tax Collector, the following overpayments of tax payments in total of $6,624.82 need to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Dated April 1, 2015, Dana Flock, Tax Office.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the Tax Collector's report from April 1, 2015.
Some
Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven, excuse me, 5-0. Item number 24 is transfers. We currently have no transfers. Item number 25, correspondence. We have a few pieces of correspondence. We have the check registers. We have a letter of resignation from Ray Faustich for the Recreation Commission. We have the report on the discount prescription drug card, which we've been extremely successful at, so that's something this board should be very pleased with. And then we also have a letter that our state delegation, Senators Kane and Kelly, and Representative Conroy, sent to Commissioner Reddiker. We're in the, with regards to Remen Street, excuse me, we're in the process of setting up a meeting to go up to DOT, which I expect to do early next week, to discuss this issue further. So that is all of our correspondence. So with that, we will move to item number 26, which is public comment. Is there any public comment? Mr. Flynn, you are the full public comment. All right, now, the full public, I should say.
Michael Flynn, 85, Skokelarat Street. I just think, you know, we were talking about the compensation for a selectman, or whoever's going to run the town. You know, I suppose in this day and age, you have to have such compensation. But when I think back to the 1950s, when Joseph Doyle was mayor of the city of Ansonia, he was getting less than $10,000 a year. He was responsible for the flood dikes that you see. Congressman Monaghan, my late father, was also behind that. Joseph Doyle was responsible in Ansonia for urban redevelopment. He did a lot of fantastic work in that town. I think the mindset was a little bit different in those days, you know. People had a greater sense of duty than they do today. I mean, I'm not objecting to anybody getting $174,000 a year to run a town, but it seems to me that I see certain dangers down the line in this, you know? And the dangers I see, if you're just going to totally bring professionals in from the outside, I can understand that things have changed with all the federal and state mandates. So you have to have highly responsible people in charge. But then, it's a dichotomy, you know? Whereas, look at what, how much did Paul Pollock get when he was first selectman? He was probably one of the most progressive first selectmen that the town had. But what's happened to our society? That's what I'd like to know. I mean, is there an overriding sense of duty left anymore? We have to totally rely on people from the outside. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing no other public comment. We will close public comment, and we will move on to selectmen's comments. And Karen, we will start with you again, because we started the other end last night.
We did. I, I'd like to sort of affirm what the comments just, just were. You know, at the risk of sounding very elderly, first year I worked at Seymour High School, my salary was $7,100. I didn't go into teaching for the money. When I left in 2011, I was making $82,000 a year. And I still wasn't doing it for the money. And I, I really feel that this board has an obligation to justify to the residents of this town how much we pay. I, I noted with interest, a couple weeks ago, I was watching our, our film of our Board of Selectmen meeting, and it was followed by a film of a meeting in Rhode Island, a town in Rhode Island, and all of the selectmen get paid in that town. Not just the first selectman, all of them get paid. It's not a lot of money, but they all get paid. So I, I think that we need to, to look at the context. I mean, if you look at the average salary of a teacher at Seymour High, which is all mine now, I don't know about the other schools, but they're not paid a lot of money. They're not. And they're not compensated for car expenses. They do get insurance, which I'm now paying privately for, because the town doesn't pay for it. So I, I would, I would like to see this conversation really expanded into, not just, not just how much money the first selectman gets paid, but how it averages out.
This is a very uncomfortable conversation for me to have.
I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm trying to be honest.
No, no, and I, and I appreciate that. That's why I kind of took myself out of this. You know, I came into this job eyes wide open. So I knew what the salary was. I have
You didn't come into this with the money.
I didn't, no, absolutely not.
I know that.
So, but the concern that I have, and I, I mean, maybe I'm speaking for Paul or not, but I think you would agree, this position is very taxing. It's very timing. It's, you know, this is not a nine-to-five, 40-hour-a-week job. Some weeks, it's a lot more than that, depending on what's going on.
With Fridays off.
And it's very difficult, with Fridays off, that's correct. It, it's very difficult to attract the right type of person because of the uncertainty that the position brings into play. And it's difficult for that. And again, I didn't get into this for the money. I agree with must, with, with what Mr. Flynn said. My parents raised me with a certain need for civic responsibility and to be involved. That being said, the position is very undercompensated. The Public Works Director and the Foreman of Public Works both make more now than the first selectman does. The Director of Operations makes more than the first selectman does. It, it's very difficult, and you may not attract the right candidate to the position because they can't take the pay cut. So I, I think that's Mr. Zouki's opinion. You know, again, I'm not in this for the money. So if you guys said to me, this, Kurt, this doesn't affect you, this goes into effect the next first selectman that comes in, whether that's in November, or three years from now, or five years from now, or seven years from now, I'm fine with that. Because again, I came in eyes wide open. But I think something needs to be done to, to improve the situation. And again, it doesn't have to impact me, and I'm fine with that. The average salary, I looked at the CCM, and I don't want to say that from over there, but between 11, resident communities with $11,000 and $20,000, the average salary for the chief elected official is $97,000. So Seymour is substantially lower than that. Now, am I saying we should go to $97,000? Absolutely not. I would vote no for $97,000, just so you know. But I think there needs to be some type of, at least, increase per term. I mean, I could stay for 20 years. I'm not staying for 20 years. I mean, there's no increase at 72.5 for the next 20 years, and I'm not sure that that's fair either for that person. But again, and I'm, and I'm boggling, I'm not going to speak for you. We came into this eyes wide open. We knew what we were getting.
Well, me, me, too. And, and the other, I, I hear your point. I really understand your point, because, and, and please don't take this out of context, but we have had, in my lifetime, since I've been here in 1955, people who were not qualified to be first selectman.
Oh, I don't disagree.
I mean, we had a retired principal, you know, a very smart lady, but I don't know if she was a politician. I don't know whether she really had the qualifications.
I think there's something to be said, and, you know, Mr. Flynn's point's well-taken, too. You know, the town manager form of government, as these towns evolve and they become, I mean, we're now a $55 million operation with almost 500 employees. You know, does it make sense to move to a town manager form of government where it's not the person who can get the most votes, but this is now a professional, credentialed, proper degrees, experience that is running your community? Where do you want to be? And I can see the argument on, on both sides of that.
But I don't think we're any different than maybe New Haven, or Bridgeport, or Waterbury, you know, where people, people assume that attorneys are going to be good politicians. I'm married to one.
You're saying he's not a good politician?
Oh, he's a great politician.
Rory, duly note that in the record, please.
No, he's a great politician. It's just that
No, I mean, points all well.
Anyway, anyway, and no offense.
No, and, and none taken. And again, I, I don't want this to be about, this is not for me. This is for the position. This is for growing our community down the line. And, you know, to Bill's point, it doesn't necessarily have to be a big lump sum of money. It can be, you know, it gets very expensive. I mean, I'm all over the state. I pay for my own gas. And again, I'm not complaining about that, because again, I came in eyes wide open. I knew that was going to be the process, and I'm fortunate to be in a financial position where I can, I can do that. But when you see your, you know, every police officer has a car, every fire chief has a car, fire marshals, deputy fire marshals, you know?
And I, and I, I know I joke with you about Fridays, but I know you have to go out at night, and on weekends, and Saturdays and Sundays, and I appreciate that. I, I really do. Okay?
But again, you know, but again, it comes with the job. We all, we all did it. I mean, that's, we know that going in.
Well, it's the same thing with being a teacher.
Yeah.
You know?
And it's, but my, well, no, stop talking.
No, no, no.
Rich is gonna, Rich is gonna hook me at some point. I can see it in his eyes. But I, I think there should be a committee formed, and it should be explored.
I agree.
That's all.
I agree. I wondered about the adopt a spot signs. I saw a couple of them are up.
The signs, the vast majority of the signs are up. There's three left to go up. I expect those to go up in the next two to three weeks. We've been working with, with Bruce on that. All, everybody who has a sign has been in contact with Bruce and Crystal to order their little placards, and that will be going up. The only one that is a little delayed is the one in front of the Historical Society.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna, they were initially going to put one on the ground underneath the sign, but that would have looked stupid. So they're actually building something that comes off the sign for the adopt a spot. But all our adopt a spots are filled and taken.
Okay.
So now we're actually looking for more, more places.
All right. And the, the other thing I wanted to say, the condition of the roads, everybody's, I mean, it's not just Seymour.
Oh, yeah.
It's the entire state. And I was driving up 313 the other day. I spoke with you prior to this meeting. 313 is a mess. In fact, my husband suggested that, I don't even know when Earth Day is. Have we passed her?
No.
No, it's coming up.
It's the end of April.
He suggested that
Twenty-second?
He suggested that the seven of us volunteer to clean up 313. It's a mess.
Amen.
Fountain Lake.
Let's do it.
Done. I'm available.
Meantime, we should, meantime, we should be offering those programs to the high school kids.
It's a dangerous road. I understand that. You know, and I had suggested before, when Dennis was here one night, I suggested about bringing in the prisoners, and he said, well, you have to supervise them, and you have to, why can't we do it?
To Mr. Flynn's point, you're talking about picking up the garbage and not filling Pothole's car.
Oh, 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 no, no.
I thought we were filling Potholes. At the town meeting.
Picking up the garbage. No, 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 no.
I'll drive the Pothole, Bill.
That's right. I'm working, I'm the guy with the gun.
No, the road is fine. In fact, I don't even go up Potsford Road anymore. I get, when I leave here, I'm going to get on Route 8 and go back up Fountain Lake, because that road is great. But the garbage is awful.
Well, let's, I mean, Al has
Now, you know.
Al has volunteered.
I could wait about all the time.
I'll jump in, if you'll do it.
I'll do it.
We can guilt the other four into joining us.
I already said I'd do it.
Nicole's in, so Paul's in.
Doing it at Jerry Park all the time, Karen.
He's got no choice now, but to say yes. We'll do it on a Friday, when Paul normally has off.
Just give me a date, and I'll be there.
Well, so then, I'll have Rory work on a time and a date where the seven of us can go out for a couple hours and pick up some garbage.
I think we might score some points.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm on board. And listen, we did behind the thing a couple years ago, you and I.
I know. I was over there with you.
Yep, we were out there, so, okay, yeah, we'll do that. Well, we'll look into doing that. I'm going to put Rory in charge, because he's the greenest guy I know.
Because Rory doesn't have enough else to do.
He's got a lot of free time. He definitely doesn't.
He's a Boston College guy.
He definitely doesn't work on Fridays.
He understands duty to his community.
That's right.
And his dedication to his job, Mr. Flynn was talking about. There's your example right there.
There you go.
I'd love underpaid. Paul?
Just a couple of quick things. A little bit of update for the skate park. Conversations with Dee, and Dee's been having conversations with Chuck Lee. Evidently, there might be a little bit of money available from the state that we can work with to possibly buy a new piece of equipment. I just want to make, make this board aware of that, if that's a possible thing, we'd like to do it. I think there's probably maybe 14 or something, $100 available. The recommendation is that we would buy a piece of equipment that's a little bit above that, and, and with the hopes that the town could pick up a tab on maybe whatever, 100, 150, or $200, whatever it is. It could be a different way to do that.
Wow, put me on the spot there, huh, Paul? That was smooth the way you did it. That was nice. I haven't done that before.
We can all chip in.
Karen's shipping it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, if, if it's, I mean, I'm kidding aside, if it's within a few hundred bucks, absolutely.
Yes. I mean, if, if, you know, state's going to come up with the bulk of the money, that's, you know, then we can, and there is a piece of equipment for about that amount of money that I need to get that information to Dee.
Yep. We can, we can cover that.
Sure. Okay. And the, along the same lines of skate park, I know that, you know, not everybody's thrilled with this skate park down there. Some, some people are not. But my suggestion would be that the Recreation Department consider hiring someone to instruct kids on how to use the skate park, how to use it properly. I mean, you have instructors for other programs, and I think that might be a good thing for someone to
On Mary's radar. She's been here five days already.
Yeah.
Something she's, yep.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be a great, great thing, because, hey, you have a bunch of kids down there, and if they at least, you know, know how to use it, and, you know, from the experience of someone that's been doing it a long time.
And to the credit of the kids down there, they're, other than that one little hiccup we had, they've been maintaining, very nicely taking care of it, protecting it, so.
Yeah. And, you know
Credit to them.
And just to go along with this, too, I think the skate park's just about to the end of what they can do. So, I mean, obviously, the, I mean, the parks would be taking over this anyway, so. And we're having trouble getting a forum now, because the excitement of what we were doing is
Is over, yeah.
It's not so sexy anymore, so to speak, because, you know, not buying the equipment and stuff.
I've seen all you keep straight face in that one. But yeah, no, I mean, that, you know, point well taken. But Mary is, it's something that's already in her, her thinking already, how to expand now. Missy's talking about it as well.
Good. Thank you. That's it.
Got it. Nicole?
Update from the turf committee. We, within the next week and a half or so, are hoping to send out our bid packages for the bleachers, turf contractors, and the GC. We're moving forward, and it's exciting. We just want to keep it moving forward and hopefully get our project done on schedule.
And schedule now is mid-September?
Mid-September, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole. Mr. Bruno?
Yeah, I'm happy to hear that the turf project at Seymour High is moving along. That's exciting stuff for our community, so that's great. Nicole, thanks for leading that. That sounds like it's going extremely well. I'm in full support of increasing the salary of our first selectman, whoever that may be, now or in the future. It's 2015. I think people deserve to have somebody who's compensated adequately for running a $55 million business. So that's just, that's just my mindset. I understand the comments that have been made. I just think it's time. And however, we discussed that with the Board of Finance, and we come up with a continuum and however we discuss that with the Board of Finance, and we come up with a continuum or an increase of a percentage per term, whatever it may be, I, I think we need to do that, other communities in our area have done that, have, have realized the necessity, and, as Mr. Zouki so ultimately stated, I think we need to really give that consideration, and I hope, I hope that moves forward. Also wanted to thank people for supporting the Spring Fest Wine and Beer Tasting, which was on March twenty-eighth. It benefited Seymour Soccer, the Land Trust, and Seymour Red, which is a local diabetes association, started by Jacob Licky, one of our younger members of our community, who suffers from diabetes, and, uh, so that, the event benefited those three charities, and I want to extend a special thank you to Alex Danka at the Land Trust, uh, for providing the venue, it was just a fantastic evening, we got a lot of great feedback from attendees that it was their, their most favorite Spring Fest yet, and, um, we look forward to next year, which is a lot of fun, so, I want to thank those that supported that, good stuff.
Alex, thank you for another TV.
And Kurt always wins the TV. It's got a collection.
Thirteen TV from Spring Fest, so.
It doesn't hurt that you put in about a hundred tickets, right?
No, 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 a lot of large numbers.
Yeah.
So, um, I have no additional comments, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion